So may or may not be a surprise to Gamble, who's wondering why his family is sitting up front, but Officer Gamble, it'll be a surprise why you're coming up front with me, Sergeant Meeks as well. So Officer Gamble's a very humble officer in person and, but tonight, very deserving of the honor. I learned of it incident through our dispatch center because I probably wouldn't have heard about it from Officer Gamble. It was passed on to Sergeant Meeks, he checked into the situation and wrote up a recommendation for me. And so tonight, we're gonna honor Officer Gamble. He's gonna be receiving a life-saving award and I'll read the background behind it. I would like to formally recommend Officer Gamble for the life-saving award based on his actions during a recent critical incident. This was, and this is written by Sergeant Meeks, "This was brought to my attention by Metcom dispatcher Sharon's Sarah Smith, who initially suggested Officer Gamble be recognized for his exceptional response. After reviewing the body cam footage, I wholeheartedly agree with this recommendation. The incident occurred when Officer Gamble responded to a call involving a male subject who was choking. Upon entering the residence, Officer Gamble found the victim in severe distress, wheezing and struggling for air. The female caller explained that the man had been choking on food and gone in and out of consciousness. Without hesitation, Officer Gamble immediately stood the man up, administered the Heimlich maneuver. An interesting timing, we had just had first aid CPR updated class just the week before. The technique had recently covered in department training just one week prior. Officer Gamble's quick, effective application of the life-saving technique was instrumental in restoring the victim's ability to breathe. The body cam footage captures the victim on the ground clearly in discomfort, but breathing thanks to Officer Gamble's decisive action. The female caller visibly relieved, leaned down to the man and reassured him saying, 'The officer saved your life.' She later told Officer Gamble directly, 'You saved his life, you are a hero.' Officer Gamble handled the high-stress situation with professionalism and skill, effectively utilizing the training he'd received to save a life. His actions not only demonstrate exceptional competence, but also a commitment to preserving life in a moment of crisis. I strongly recommend Officer Gamble for the life-saving award in recognition of his outstanding response to this incident." And I 100% agree with Sergeant Meeks. He said he figured it out 10 minutes ago, so. Thank you for your time, I thought this was a wonderful time to do with all the students here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, I just wanted, can you say how many we've done of those in the last several years and to sort of validate the significance of this award?
Yeah, so since being here, since May 2020, Officer Sandoval has received a life-saving award, he's actually was on his commute home from work, but entered a burning residence and was able to safely escort the elderly couple from the home. And then, in the last five years that I know of, so Gamble would be the second.
Thanks Chief, well deserved there Officer Gamble, thank you. All right, here's us to the second presentation, crosswalk safety video, Julia?
Yes, and actually I'm gonna ask Chief Johns to come back up. We showed this to council several weeks ago, we made a few modifications based on your input, so I wanted to show that video again that will then put out on social media and then I wanted Chief Johns to also just share what she has been doing over the past month or so as we've been trying to ramp up awareness and enforcement of crosswalk safety. So we'll show the video and then she can just sort of talk about what she's been doing.
Crosswalks are an ever-present aspect of roadways that have their own laws that must be adhered to by drivers and pedestrians. While there are similarities, the laws are unique to each state and may change over time. Having a clear understanding of the laws in Oregon helps ensure the safety of those in and around crosswalks. In Oregon, pedestrians are not considered crossing until a part of the pedestrian enters the crosswalk. A part of a pedestrian could be a foot, arm, or item that is an extension of the pedestrian such as a wheelchair, cane, or bicycle. Once a pedestrian enters the crosswalk or demonstrates the intent to proceed, vehicles in the lane of the pedestrian or any adjacent lane must yield at the crosswalk whether marked or unmarked. Always cross with caution, whether legal or illegal, it is irrelevant to the laws of physics. Make sure to check for speed and distance of any nearby vehicles before crossing. The State and Police Department hopes that this information will help keep you and others safe while traveling. You can learn more about crosswalk laws with resources provided by the Oregon Department of Transportation. You can also learn more about what the city is doing to improve streets and crosswalk safety by checking out our website or subscribing to receive email updates. Safe travels.
And I just realized Officer Gamble was in that video, so it's double Gamble.
Yeah, so my staff's been out, as you know, between calls for service, being more visible around the crosswalks in town, whether the major intersections or especially near the schools during beginning and after-school hours. And doing a lot of education, talking to the walkers and also talking to motorists, and it's education on both sides. Sometimes we've seen where people are leaving the curve very abruptly in low light with dark clothes and motorists don't have a chance to see them and stopping distance makes it difficult. And sometimes it's education of the drivers that, you know, once someone starts out there of yielding to them and remaining stopped. So we did some education at the schools as well, been very present with their crossing guards and working with them. We've had help with City Hall, putting out more education on Facebook, and then have the flyers that we've been handing out at businesses and around town, have them here tonight, back at the desk.
Any questions on that?
Counsel. Is that Counsel Sam's got something on his mind?
I didn't have a question, but I just want to say thank you. I know I've been kind of pushing on the crosswalk safety and I appreciate you doing that. I think it's really important, so I'm real happy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor.
I wanted to say thank you for putting the subtitles on the video.
And then, this is, you know, this will be an ongoing thing, I mean, I think with any sort of educational component, it's gonna be a regular thing. I just also wanted to remind the council as well as those here that there are some other things that are being done to help improve safety. We received the Safe Streets to School grant that will allow us to do some significantly enhanced pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Third and Fern Ridge. And then the county received a Safe Roads to School grant that will allow them to do some ADA access ramps along First as well as improved crossing at Locust and First. So there'll be some significant safety improvements here in the next year.
Yeah, thank you Julia. So this is the moment that most of you are here for, I think, I guess, maybe. I've never seen so many people in the council room, so it must be. Before we start student recognition, I think I'm gonna let Counsel Carrie make a statement.
Well, congratulations to the students that are here tonight that we're representing or honoring, would you please stand up? Don't be shy. Outstanding. So I think it's pretty amazing that we're celebrating you guys the same week we're celebrating Dr. Seuss' birthday. Did you guys have one in school today, your schools? See the teachers are faculty dressed up, maybe as Dr. Seuss characters? I just wanted to share one quote from a book, I'm a forty of the whole book, but it's All the Places You'll Go by Dr. Seuss. "You're off to great places, today's your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way." Congratulations to you guys and highly encourage you guys to continue on what you're doing and make every semester a four-point master. Congratulations.
I have a few logistical announcements. If you haven't checked in with Nancy or Kendra at the front, do so so that way we make sure that we have their certificate ready for you. The plan is, and this is maybe a little news to counselors, we're gonna have the mayor come up here and I'm gonna announce the names and hand him the certificate, but then I would like the other counselors to come up as well next to him so you could also say congratulations. And then we're gonna have the students stand up here until the end and then we'll take a group photo as one and we're gonna do State and High first and then we'll do Regis. And then while the, you know, we have a few great students here, State and High School had 73 students with a 4.0 or greater, we have, I think we had 24 RSVP, I'm not sure that we actually have 24 here, so. Are we ready? Okay. And I'm going to, this is kind of for the students, I'm gonna read the next name when the student's about here, just so we can kind of keep it moving. So the first one is Lillian Angelo. I'm not very happy to be here. Stephen Colburn.
You gotta be happy you worked.
Shake hands. Torklin Dean. Have Kayden Dean coming up after that.
I wonder if they were last year, right? Weren't you guys there last year too?
Molly Emmer. And Miles Emmer after that. Brooke Hibler. Kenzie Hollenbeck. Leila Hunt. Oliver Hunt. Landon Springer. Daniel Young. And Elizabeth Young. Is there anybody that is here from State and High that we did not name that thinks they should be named? So now I think we need to have the students maybe come in a little bit so we can do a group photo.
Do we have students on this side? Yeah, perfect. And if we can get together like we like each other, that'd be great.
Get some pets for the picture, let's do some rows.
Get in rows, like get in the front.
There we go. Yay!
So we can have a straight line, guys.
Yes.
All right, now the Regis students know how it's supposed to work. So at Regis, they had 30 students with a 4.0 or higher GPA. As it's a smaller school, we have fewer students here this evening. Cassie England. Addison Bishop. Hannah Hillisland. Ainsley Hume. And William Miyaki. And that is all, so now you can pose for your photo? Great job everybody! And we have, Nellie, we have some cookies and refreshments out in the lobby as a congratulatory...
I'll just hit this, we'll pause it. No.
Yeah, I know, do you want to maybe take a short break so we can, the students can have?
Sure. All right, it's 7:25, we're gonna resume the meeting and next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Loxas, come on in.
To be named Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to congratulate Officer Gamble on his certificate. It's the first good thing I've heard. You folks know what happened to me on, in September. I alleged dereliction of duty because I want you to imagine how you would feel if you called the police when you saw a drunk guy trying to get into his automobile. Within a matter of moments, they roll up, they're there for less than a couple of minutes, and then they tell the guy to go sleep it off in his car. So I found the video of me interviewing him. That wasn't me saying it, that was the drunk. This is a leadership issue. When you have a homeowner in his yard, clearly identify himself being harassed for five minutes, it shouldn't have lasted that long. It should have gone away when I said, "I'm the property owner, I'm exercising." Then to witness this, and then a month ago I told you that our museum was robbed. And that our confidence in the police isn't such that why should I file a report? They're not gonna do something with this guy, what are they gonna do about the guy who stole $300 worth of bottles and cans, donations to the museum? Thank you.
Thanks James. Is there anybody else who wants to offer public comment? Okay, go here, eh? Opportunity for general business, any general business? Communication from city staff?
I've got just a few things. One, I wanted to mention that last year we did an adventure log over spring break where we tried to encourage people that might need to stay in town or want to stay in town, that there's fun things to do at parks and things like that. And we're expanding upon this a little bit this year. And Melanie, Amazing Melanie, created this little flyer, it's super cute, where there's some ideas of traditional fun things that kids can do. We're gonna have some special events where, and I'm sort of looking to her, I don't know if we've fully confirmed.
We have not.
We have not fully confirmed, but we're going to, we have essentially confirmed, we just don't have the dates and times confirmed. But we're gonna offer tours of the wastewater treatment plant, a tour of the police station, when? Chief John? And then associated with that, so offering some like dates and times where we're gonna offer that for people, but then we also thought it would be fun to, before and after some of those, give students or youth an opportunity to meet a counselor. And so we are hoping, once we get the dates and times confirmed, that we could get one or two of you to be willing to just meet in City Hall or meet out in front of the police station or in front of City Hall for students to just get to talk to a counselor. And then we have some other things on the adventure log, we're, you know, doing a review of a local business, going to the pool, and so then they'll turn this in and get a little prize as well. So trying to make it, make sure people know that there are fun things to do for youth in State and we'll create some fun things to do. And then also on there, I'm sure, is the library, I'm looking to, yes, visit the public library is one of the things that are on there. So, I'm sorry I can't give you a specific time, I thought that we might have things confirmed, we don't. But hopefully, I'll send an email out when we have dates and times confirmed and then see if you guys would be willing to be present. We're thinking it's gonna be like two to three, noon to one kind of timeframe, like one or two times during the week of spring break.
Operating hours?
Yeah, yes.
Julie, is the pool open too for open swimming?
The pool will be open, yes, yeah. I think what we don't know is whether or not there's gonna be any special pool activities at the time, so. And do we know if the slide's gonna be open?
Yes, it is open.
Yay, the slide will be open.
The slide is reopened, as long as they're staffing that week, we'll be able to have it open during the week.
As long as they're staffing, it will be open, so I'm pretty sure it'll be open, so. I guess the only other thing that I have on my list of things to share is just a clarification from a comment that was made at the last council meeting regarding system development charges, and I can't remember if I put this in the update or not, that he had indicated that system development charges were waived in downtown and he was concerned about them stopping, and so I wanted to clarify that there are system development charges in the downtown area, revitalization area. It's only the transportation system development charge that's reduced, and it's reduced to 443 PM peak trips. And normally, the transportation system development charge is 3,272, so it's quite a reduction. This reduction appears to have been in place since the methodology was originally adopted and we don't have, we haven't had any conversations about that being modified, so I don't see the point for it being eliminated, so I just wanted to clarify that since that was a little, I was caught off guard with it being waived or SDC's being waived. So that's all I have prepared, I don't know if any of my staff have anything that they want to share, any questions?
Counsel Sam, looks like you've got something on your mind.
I just, I just have one question, you may not have an answer, I'll pick me up at Public Works here, but I saw some comments about trees being cut down by the water tower.
Yes.
Main Street, and I just, and I don't know anything about it, I was just curious if, you know, there was any backstory to that.
Yeah, there is, thank you, actually Counselor Patty forwarded me that screenshot and asked about that. It appears, from what I heard from Public Works, those were damaged in the 2021 ice storms, they have kind of come down slowly over time, the trees really weren't viable, so they were all gone, they were planted when the original, when the reservoir was originally built back in the 90s, so they're not, they weren't newly planted, they were planted at that time, they were damaged by the ice. And then they also, because of the damage, there were limbs that were falling down and damaging the fence around the property over time. So, yes, they were removed, they were removed because of damage.
Thank you, yeah, I figured there was a backstory to that, I was curious.
Were they all removed?
My understanding is that they were removed a little bit at a time, so I think that maybe now they are all removed, but they were removed kind of like one or two a year for the past few years, or I don't know how many they were removed at any given time, but, so they weren't just clear-cut today, or last week, they were removed over the last several years.
Anything else Julia, that's it?
That's all I got.
Okay, from council communication, council and mayor, anybody?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
We forgot, I don't know if we forgot, but we didn't talk about the If I Were Mayor contest.
We did have flyers up front, so, yeah, so we have some flyers up there, so.
Well, if you're still watching, the If I Were Mayor contest runs through this time, so get more information on the website.
Yep, anybody else? I got a couple things, so I attended the school board meeting, just wanted to give everybody a heads up, it was a great meeting, they are featuring the grade school today, I saw that. Mr. Patty didn't tell me about that, I was overwhelmed with parents, but it was really cool because they showcased the, they showcased the elementary school and they did, each class had like a presentation, so it was pretty cool and a lot of parents there, and so gave them an update about the Detroit drawdown, gave them an update on what we're doing with the city, et cetera, and well received, so next time you're all, I'm not sure what the next highlight will be, but you can find it.
Sounds good, thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. I have a question for council, I think Julia and I have talked about this before, I just wanted to play it out there again. Is there any reason, or is there any thoughts about changing the hours of the council meeting? Starting at six instead of seven? I know you and I had this conversation, I'm just thinking about it again, especially the little summer coming up and, so just something to think about, I don't have any answer, I just wanted to throw that out there. I can't remember what we talked about last time.
Yeah, I don't remember when we spoke about it specifically, the only challenge with that is if we have a work session, I don't know if some of you can be here at five or want to be here at five. And then I think the council rules specify the time, but you can change your rules, so.
Okay, I was just throwing it out there. And then, many of you saw my email about Sixth Street, and I know Julia got on it, but I wanted to follow up a little bit more about what was done in... about what was done the next day. You know what was done the next day? Because I rode my bike over that street yesterday and it's really still not even close to being something that's helped or... I think, I think we need to do another trip over it, is what I'm saying. So did the cold mix show up?
I don't, I'm sorry. I didn't, I did not check. I will say, so the plan was, so they did go out and put gravel down. The plan was to go and put cold mix down to kind of fill the potholes. The bigger solution really is regrading the road. The challenge is that because of sort of gravel on the side, it's, the road is graded this way, whereas most roads are graded this way, so the water goes off. And so what's happening is the water is just sort of like draining to the middle. And so there, I've asked for a cost estimate to do the regrading. That was the solution that they think would be a better fix and then staying on top of the maintenance of that. So once I have an estimate and whether or not that's something that can just happen within this budget or it's something we need to do a little bit more, I will come back with that information. But that's the long, that's the long midterm plan. So that's, that would solve a lot. But I'll, I'll check and see where they're at. I did drive over that this morning too, and it certainly seemed a lot better than it was last week, but there's still some, some low spots.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's the streets divided in half and I think the other half closer to Pam's house is the run that hasn't got attention. And I think that's what we're waiting for. But just so council knows, I think the neighborhood and that neighborhood in general really is asking us for some, for some direction, asking a lot of questions why it hasn't been that way up to this point. And so I really want to make sure we as a council put some little urgency behind that. And Julia is right, we did have a conversation together about it. But I went out there and I visited with them at lunchtime on that Friday. That makes a big difference. I mean, they're really expressing to me, you know, their concerns and I want to make sure we follow through. So I appreciate you what you've done and go from there. And the last thing is March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. So I think I'm going to let Mr. Sims lead the meeting that night. Just because I might be, you know, doing something else.
Love it.
And that's not celebrating, that's driving me back from where I'm going to be. Anybody else? So maybe I, last time you were, I think you did pretty well as a filling interview, so. I'd like to go again.
I got you.
Mayor, as you were asking the questions, it reminded me of something I didn't mention. I think you all know or saw or I mentioned it, that we're starting a new program called Why Wednesday. The first one was a little bit of a soft one where we talked about our park shelters, but we'll get into some of the bigger questions that are out there. But I also want to let council know if you think of anything that you want, that you hear from folks and you want to ask, or if you're asked things that you want to answer. It doesn't have to be just staff. It doesn't have to be just me. It won't be just me. But if there's things that you're asked that you think would be a good Why Wednesday question, let us know and we're happy to record you answering it.
Sounds good. One thing I did remember. Trivia night with the mayor. That place was a packed house. I didn't realize so many people were going to show up for that deal. And I can tell you that I thought my trivia skills were at least halfway decent. I got shown the door in a couple of those. It's a good thing my kid was there because my kid helped us do the, get some points on the music one.
Yeah, movies and music are not good.
That was a good time. I'm glad everybody showed up for it. My first experience with that, and I think I'll go back. I think it was cool. And lastly, Julia, thank you for the summation and the follow-up on all the Public Works comments from the previous meeting and our weekly summary. That makes a, that goes a long way for me. I'm sure it does for council as well. So thank you for pinpointing it, identifying each question and with the follow-up. Anybody else? All right, let's go.
Why? I don't know, but I unmuted it.